Called a screen and people dialing it from the internet.
That's the internet?
That's the internet, yeah.
Me and Al Gore did this. Leave me alone.
There you go, Mayor.
Are we live? Recorded? You can, alright.
You're live.
Alright, thank you so much Stacy and welcome. Let's go and get our Thursday, June 5th, 2025 Town Council meeting going. As always, we start with the pledge of allegiance. And I'd like Donnie Bowen to lead us this time.
To the flag of the United States of America.
To the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and the rhythm of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good job, DB. Ha ha ha. Alright, can I have a motion to approve the agenda as submitted? Second, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve the minutes of the May 8th, 2025 Town Council meeting as submitted? So move. We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Alright, no scheduled appointments. Let's move right into reports. We'll start with our town administrator Linda Vee.
Hey, Mayor.
Oh, excuse me, yes.
We're gonna do attendance?
Oh, we don't, yeah.
I mean, it's a meeting. We're voting on stuff, so.
We stopped, didn't we stop doing those last month? We stopped doing them last month, I thought, but we could definitely do it.
Really?
Okay.
We stopped doing that. We stopped doing that several months ago. I take attendance.
Okay, thank you.
He takes it sitting there, yep. Thank you, Greg.
Stacy.
I saw you seeing Stacy on the screen. I'll be honest with you.
Checking you.
I'm checking you.
Alright, go ahead.
Alright, good evening, Council. Linda Vasallo, Town Administrator. I have a very, very brief report this month. I'm happy to report. So, good news. I know that standard operating procedures has been on the mind of the mayor. We are close to being complete and we hope to be wrapped up by the end of June 30th, and that is for all departments and all functions. We finished up our annual audit last month. It was submitted on time. Joanne led the effort on that, and the independent auditor will be here in July to present those findings. We don't anticipate any problems there. We are still awaiting for the final budget from the Chesapeake Beach Water Reclamation and Treatment Plant. We do have a budget. We don't have their final budget. And we don't have the update on the capital improvement plans, however. We will be going to them in July for a full request for that. We also had a meeting yesterday to talk about potential look back on the operating agreement for all four of the partners. Specifically around equivalent dwelling unit allocation. So as soon as I have more information on that, I will pass it along. But basically, the study, I'm sorry, the agreement is many, many years old. I believe 1991 was the last time it was updated, and we're looking to potentially amend that, and all of the partners are on board. So as soon as I have that information, I'll bring it to the mayor and council. Finally, we are, we have been, we have requested a tour of the facility, and we will likely be replacing a meeting for the council or a work session either in July or August to tour the facility, unless you want to do it off-cycle. But they are absolutely willing to do that. And their council has already toured it. So also just some other quick items that I mentioned in my report, the comp plan, which I'm sure Rick will update you on briefly. We are on target there to get that adopted early fall as planned. We'll have our first round of staff annual reviews at the end, by the end of June. I did want to mention while I have you all here, we've been having some incredible issues with technology, specifically with our website. So we're looking to do a quick update as soon as possible. They've re, the company that houses that for us is Civic Plus, and they've done a refurbish. But we are looking to completely overhaul and revamp that within the next two months. And our new marketing communications person started Monday. His name's Kevin Schmidt. Unfortunately, he can't be here tonight, but he, that will be one of his first tasks. The operating system is no more, and I think the last patch was in January. And then we have in your packet tonight, I included your copy of the CIP status and open contracts. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
As always, you have a lot of information you're gonna get from staff tonight. As always, it's in board docs for all, everybody's on the screen up there. But all of our audience and so forth, go to board docs. You can see everything we're reading. Very, very, very transparent. Counsel, you have it all. So if you, does any council member have any questions for Linda? If not, we will move on. Alright, let's move on. Calver County Sheriff's Department monthly report from the back row. I might have to turn that on. Gotta turn that on.
Good. I would like to say first, next month, can I report from where Ms. Myler's at? That looks like a much better location.
And staff, is that like a retreat that we could do?
So, May of 2025, the sheriff's office handled 111 calls for service in the North Beach area, which was slightly up from our 97 calls in April. Within those calls, 608 were self-initiated calls for service such as patrol checks, traffic stops, and follow-ups to other investigations that we're currently conducting. And out of the 111, as it says, they were routine calls from citizen complaints, alarms, things like that. Had a destruction of property on Annapolis Avenue. A fence was damaged by an unknown individual, which the deputy explained to me that was on scene. I didn't make it there. Appeared a vehicle drove into it. So we're still working on that. We had a couple DUIs that there were auto accidents we responded to where the drivers were found to be impaired, and they were placed under arrest and charged appropriately. We had a couple EPs and mental healths that you see, some involve juveniles, so the information is a little lacking when it involves a juvenile. We don't disclose too much. And we had, I'm sure everyone is aware, we had several assaults, but I'm sure everyone's aware of the one that we had at First Friday. That was all over Facebook and social media and all that good stuff. That case has been closed out by the deputy that was handling it. I assisted her with that. We conducted the investigation, interviews, everything with that, and charged accordingly. That case is pending court right now. So once that goes through, I'll be happy to update anyone that has questions in regards to that. At a trespassing juvenile knocking on doors, that was dealt with. Most of the juveniles, if you look at the report, we have referred a lot of that to the SROs at the school per agency policy. We refer a lot of that to them if we don't charge right then and there. But whether we charge or not, we still have to contact the SROs with the school board and the school that they attend, just to make them aware of everything that's going on. Had a couple warrant services and found properties. I did retrieve some property from here that was collected over the years. I did thank the staff here for that. That was quite an abundance of property that was left at the Welcome Center, but that's all been taken care of. Did anyone have any questions in regards to the report?
I, I don't, but thank you so much for addressing. I know we're gonna continue to ramp up, especially we have an event tomorrow night. We talked about that. And just, just, we have, you can see, as everybody in here probably can see, the influx of vehicles coming in our town has really, really increased dramatically. And it's gonna be one of those years. So thank you so much for doing whatever it takes.
I know the folks on Bay Avenue are happy. They come out and greet us every day and tell us, thank you for running radar there to slow the people down. So that's one of our hotspots we've been hitting. And the mayor brought some issues to me today in reference to the Welcome Center with the stop sign, and we will begin addressing that tomorrow and get that rectified.
One question.
Yes, sir.
If you know what, great. If not, it's alright. The auto accident that happened in San Francisco, do you know approximately what time that was?
I was there for that one. We got called that, I mean, to get into it a little more, because I was actually on scene for that one. That one was, I want to say around 12:30 or 1 o'clock in the morning. We were dispatched. A gentleman was out walking. He had just gotten home from the VFW. He went for a walk. While he was walking, a moped went by, and he was like, hmm, I haven't seen that in here before. It turned on the first street as you go into San Francisco by the bay, and he heard a thud. So he discontinued his walk and started walking back.
No, because I don't remember that happening. Of course, it was at that time, so I was asleep.
Yes.
And thankfully, it wasn't when the kids were out, because this is the time of year where
Correct.
they're all everywhere.
Yes.
So good. Alright, thank you.
No, and once the gentleman was placed under arrest for driving under the influence, I did go and locate the vehicle he struck. I made contact with the individual and took care of everything from there.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
This is Alan Kramer. I have a question or a comment, actually. Couple weeks ago, this is gets at the mayor's thoughts about how busy it's getting. Out walking in the evening the dogs, and I was down on First Street right outside of where the brewery's gonna be. That was right along that side.
Okay.
Yeah, Seventh Street. When you go straight through that, you end up on Atlantic Avenue, and that's supposed to be one way. And I can't tell you the number of times that I see vehicles coming out from there instead of going all the way around. This particular evening, I just got across that intersection, walking up. There's a vehicle that was coming out the wrong way. Another vehicle wanted to turn in. And they nearly collided. Both people got out of their cars. I was like, uh oh, better get 911 on my phone ready. And then a second car coming out the wrong way stopped. Everybody emptied. And it played out okay, but it's just something that I don't, for whatever reason, people think they want to come out that way, even though they're going against traffic, and it nearly ended up in an accident right there that night. So just an observation that I had out walking to town one time that yeah, it's what we get when we get visitors coming in town.
Yeah, I've caught up. When I do the boardwalk, I generally come out and go down hit Atlantic as well each time, just to make a pass-through. And when you get down to, I believe it's Eighth, Eighth or Ninth is the next one. They get to there and they think they can turn right, and I'm shooing them away. So, and most of the time, it's, I will say, it's out-of-county people. But I will make the deputies aware and make sure we check on that more frequently for it. Actually, I had him. I'm sorry, sir.
Say your mic off, Al.
Sorry about that, Greg. I was just making the observation that that corner, Seventh Street right there where, you know, Mexico is and the brewery's gonna be, and you got the wheelhouse, you've got all those other restaurants. It's a very busy intersection and it's, I think it's an area that we need to pay attention to, because there's a lot of people wanting to come out the wrong way there and you know, nearly had an accident there one, one night a couple of weeks ago.
I mean, I could tell you that we have a massive amount of signs. We have arrows painted on the ground. We have signs on every pole. We have signs on the Jersey wall. And if anybody in here or on TV can tell us how to get people to think, we will pay you a lot of money. I mean, there's only, that's the sucky part about it, you know, because also where the library is, is a big issue. That's why I put the flowerpots there. Everywhere is an issue in the summertime, and these guys could be chasing ghosts. So we just need people to follow the basic understanding that it says, do not enter one way. I don't know what else we can do. At the Welcome Center, Phil could probably tell you 100 times a day, they come down Fifth Street and make a right on Bay Avenue. I couldn't even tell you how many times. And it says 14 places one way. And so we just gotta stay on top of it and do the best we can.
Yeah, I, I think on Seventh Street, one thing, an observation I've had, because I do look for that, I look for that arrow. And it's there, but I think it needs to be probably painted. But I, I agree. I mean, some of these things, you could be chasing things all around town, so.
Yeah, we'll definitely keep a better eye on it for you.
He is right, because it doesn't just happen at night either. It happens in broad daylight. You know, people getting their mail will pull up even, even, I've seen a couple of town residents like do a Uwe kind of thing. They'll park in front of the, you know, market and turn around and come out.
Yep.
But yeah, a lot of people will park in front of where the, you know, Palm Reader building was. They'll park right there in front of those two buildings, and then they'll just back out and pull out. So I've seen it a lot.
Anything else for the deputy before we move on?
I'll be here till the end if anybody thinks of anything.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I do want to, I want to circle back to Linda, because this is a topic that we've been talking about, parking, streets and so forth. We've worked, you know, I learned a long time ago is that there's a thing that I learned from the former mayor, unattended consequences. And I've lived by that. And that's why I probably frustrate people, because I won't rush to a decision or rush to a change, because somebody's yelling and screaming. There's nothing worse to me in leadership as going one direction and realizing you rushed it, now you gotta go the other way. So the parking has taken longer, but the town's 125 years old. It's not like we just started yesterday. This has been a problem for 125 years. And we're addressing it. So you're gonna see Linda send out an update to all council members. And we're gonna have a massive communication program out to the residents and everybody. Wherever you see yellow now will become red and will become a ticket by that gentleman in the back. If it's blue, it's handicap. If it's white, it's town proper. Period. And then we'll have all the signs replaced. We'll have all the roads painted, the street, all that. And then we'll enforce everything we can enforce, including the cones. But once we put this plan in place, I feel very comfortable working with Donnie Bowen, a million phone calls, conversations with Linda, the deputies and everybody, that this will be the best plan that we can come up with. And at that point, then we'd need to figure out how Arlington, Northern Virginia, District of Columbia, and all that deals with craziness like this. Because there's only so much we're gonna be able to do, and we're gonna do the best we can for all of our residents and our guests. And, and, and Linda, you can add something you like.
No, Mayor, I think you pretty much covered it. We, we have written an outreach plan that we're planning to launch here within the next week or so, probably closer to a week. And we're working on engaging a company that's gonna come in and do all the painting and striping for us. We're in the process of creating a GIS map in-house to give to that contractor. Poor Rick Crunk got tasked with that job. We want to make sure that when we get that map ready, it's made publicly available so that the public can see where we're gonna be doing this painting. I've spoken with one or two of the constituents on Third Streets that had concerns about the cones. We've explained to them how we're going to enforce this after the work is done. They are comfortable with the approach. So I think we're in a really good spot. Do I wish it had gone earlier and quicker? I do. But I think we're in a spot now that all the staff is geared up and ready to go, and I think we'll be done with this within two months. Uncle Wood.
I just want to throw that back out there, because I know it's been a lot of emails back and forth. Alright, let's move right into planning and zoning code enforcement. Rick?
Good afternoon, evening. I really don't have a whole lot to add to the report. We do have, we did do our first initial training session with the new software we've been talking about. There will probably be about a dozen of those training sessions, because there's seven different modules. So it's, it's a pretty robust system. It's got, there's a lot more to it than the previous one. The goal is to be done within the next 30 days and have at least two or three of those modules up and running.
Rick, at the end of the day, what, one sentence you can tell our council and tell whoever's watching this, what is the benefit to the residents with all this effort that you guys are putting into?
The ability to see everything that's going on. So they'll be able to, they'll be able to see where permits are, what those permits are, business licenses, rental licenses. They'll have 24-hour access to login and look at their own applications, online permitting, payments. They won't have to come in, bring a check. They can do everything online.
Is report as in all of the department's report is in here? Any questions for Rick? I have two, dealing with planning commission things. The first one, it's talking about 8836 Greenwood. That is like right next to the road that's on Second Street.
Correct.
Because they cleared that out. We were puzzled by how that, that's within town limits, that particular parcel.
That is in town limits.
But they got one next to it isn't. Like the house that's there, that's next to it. Is that still?
Everything on the left is town limits. The house on the corner to the right, once you go through the stop sign, is not.
It's so, okay, I see. And the other one is for the preliminary approval for the arcade and bar. Is that Sister's Corner's building?
That is Metropolitan Appliance.
Oh, it's one on the other side. Okay.
The opposite corner.
Okay, because I was like, they're never gonna leave.
Yeah, no, Metropolitan Appliance.
So that, that's my only question. Thank you.
Yep. Anything else? Anyone?
Since we were talking about, like, I saw your map. I came in your office. It looks good. I love it. You know, I have a question too. Like, when you get to the enforcement part of things, is Rick gonna be doing the enforcement of this, or is the police gonna be?
Police.
Okay.
The red is ticket.
Okay.
Right now is yellow, which means unloading. It's, there's no, there's nothing that can be done.
Yes.
So red will be no parking. It's also, you know, the law is 30, 20, whatever feet from this, from that. All of that will be clearly marked, so there's no confusion. And at that point, I just talked to the sergeant again about ticket. If they, we have to start enforcing these rules. This is not us making them up. This is state law.
Agreed.
State law. So if we, if we're gonna be serious about it, then you gotta get, and eventually people will catch on, not to park there.
Right, I agree. Okay.
And that will solve one of the, and Council Madosman had a problem with, is right there in front of Mexico on Seventh Street and Bay. When you try to come around that corner, when they park all the way up onto the crosswalk, you go into the other lane to go west on Seventh Street, which then you go into incoming traffic. So there won't be anybody parking there, or they can, but they're gonna donate a lot of money to the police department. Just saying.
Yeah.
Yeah, because you can't make the turn.
Can't make the turn. So it'll be, I appreciate it, Rick. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Public Works. DB, his report is included, and if you notice, there's a lot of activity going on right now.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. And like I said, you have my report in front of you, but I'd like to, I'd like to give you all an update on something that's not in the report. We just had a meeting on Wednesday. But if y'all remember about a year ago, we had two firms come in. We have a big problem down there, coastal offshore breakwater problem down at Seventh Street there. You know, the area where the boardwalk turns and goes out. We had a lot of storms, a lot of damage there. So we had a couple firms come in. They did a presentation. We got a lot of good information from those presentations. After that, we put an RFP out for designing a fix for that area. On Wednesday, I'm happy to say, we had, you know, went through the RFP process, but on Wednesday, we had a kickoff meeting with the firm, Calvert Soul Conservation, who was awarded that design for that project. And I think the town is gonna really see so many great things. We had a really, really good kickoff meeting, and that was the one if the council members were the oyster. You know, we had the offshore breakwaters, and then we had the oyster reef, and all that was in front of there. And we had, the person who's working on that for Calvert Soul Conservation is really into this project. So he came out. I mean, he was like jumping out of his shoes on Wednesday just to get started on it. They've already did some background stuff with the state for permitting and everything like that. Like I said, they were awarded a contract. We had a pre-con, pre-con meeting. We walked the area. They looked at sewer line that we've been talking about, protecting that. He looked at the breakwaters. And so you'll see them out there. They're gonna start with their survey and design type work. So if you see them out in the water and waiters, you know, tell your neighbors that's what's going on. And we, they gave us roughly like a six-month time period from today, when hopefully we will bring something for the council, like a preliminary design. And they've already reached out. I know Linda's talked to a couple people that supply oysters locally. Morgan State College is one of them, right down in St. Leonard's. And they've reached out to them. They're good partners with them. So it's gonna be so much local press, and I think we're gonna get so much information and so much better, so many benefits out of this from having oysters out there. You get cleaner water. You get fish coming in. People fishing off the pier will actually have, you know, fish out there to fish from the oyster reef and everything else. So it's gonna be a lot of positive stuff coming up. Kevin, our new person, he sat in on the meeting, so he's geared up too. He was really excited, asked a lot of questions at the meeting. So look forward to some real cool stuff coming out real soon here about that project. Um, did anybody have any questions on anything else in the report?
I do. I
Yes, ma'am.
Give us a swim area update.
I can. We did send the permit package. Y'all remember that's, the swim area updates, talking about the kayak launch, moving the poles possibly, and a ramp heading down to the beach. We did send all that information up to MD, the permit information. They sent me an email back saying they received the package. They had a few questions, so I got with Bayland on the drawings. On May the 6th, we resubmitted the drawings to them. And the representative from MD, they emailed me back. But originally, they said 90 days from the time they received that, so we should be right at that timeframe. I can reach out, money and email her and say, you know, where are we at? But we, they have all the information. They said, yes, thanks for the updated drawings. This is correct now. So we're just waiting to hear back from them. So they have to get the permits first, and then we can put that part out to bid. That possibly could work out with the boardwalk redecking, so hopefully we'll have a contractor there. So maybe we might be able to luck out and get some work done while they're here on that.
Any, any other questions for DB? Alright, thank you.
Yep.
Treasury report.
Good evening. You have your treasurer's report for, through May 31st. The most significant item I have on the treasury report is the fund balances on the front page. The $3,920,000 for the rainy day fund, and the sewer rainy day fund of $1,229, and the water $597. So I think we're well protected as far as town and if a catastrophe financially was to happen, but I doubt that. That's my treasurer's report.
I, I will tell you that being involved with the Maryland Municipal League and dealing with all the municipalities around the state, the stories I'm hearing, and I'm sure we're gonna hear a lot more when I get to MML. I want to thank Joanne. I want to take, take, thank all of staff, because North Beach is, is in a position where a lot of municipalities are, are really freaking out right now with everything's going on with the feds, with the state, and just overall the economy with the housing and so forth. So I commend you. Thank you. And I thank staff, because our residents, you know, I hope they realize you guys are doing a great job protecting them, making sure that we can weather the storm. And I don't know what that means. I just know that I do a meeting with these guys all the time, at least twice a month, and it is some of the stuff I'm hearing, you know. So thank you so much, Joe.
Any questions? Thank you.
Waterfront, Phil.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Nothing really to add to my report. We're just kinda gearing up for Friday, hoping it doesn't rain, and looking forward to the weekend. Trying to get some people in here.
I'd like to say, welcome back.
Yeah.
So sorry what you went through.
That's fine. Appreciate it.
We're happy you're back. We need you back. So whatever you need from us, just let us know.
Yeah, I've just been planning to catch up this week, but it's been good.
I know you are, because I know you. So, so just whatever you need, just let us know.
I appreciate it, everybody.
We got your back, whatever you need. You know, I'm very excited. I think you got a great person with you, Emma. Y'all two would be a great, are a great team. And I tell you, I feel the energy down there. I feel the energy when I go down with your staff. I try not to go down there too much. Phil, Phil wants to run me off sometimes, because of you, I just start talking. And I don't mean to. I'm just so excited because of staff. He's got amazing staff down there. It looks wonderful down there. I know we're working on adding a movie, maybe.
Yeah, we were talking about that.
We're still working on it. So I don't know where we are, but I don't need to talk about it right now. But again, it's looking wonderful down there. I do want to add one thing. That old clock, that clock is just, I, I think we need to just is good? Alright, well, between you and Phil, all I'm saying is, what are we gonna do? Whatever you need from us. I can't tell you how many people come up to me and telling me the clock's not working. So just keep doing what you're doing. Get her fixed, whatever y'all need to do, just let us know. So anybody have any questions for these guys? keep doing what you're doing, get it fixed, whatever y'all need to do, just let us know. So anybody have any questions for these guys or for Phil? His report is there. All right. Thank you, Phil.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right, let's move right into public comments. The town of North Beach welcomes public comment. Please limit your public comment to three minutes. Public comment will also be taken in chat box. Oh, that's right over there. I keep looking over there. During the Zoom meeting, please take your name and address prior to your comment. And if, if it goes out and we get comments, they can always email us. And I don't see anybody. Wake up back there. No, I'm teasing. All right, Earl's back to sleep and leave him alone. If we get something, Stacy, let us know.
Mayor, we do not have anyone in the audience.
All right. Let's move into item eight, ordinance resolution. I'm going to turn this over to Councilwoman Healy. We have ordinance twenty-five dash one. We have twenty-five dash two.
I move that the town approve ordinance number twenty-five dash one and ordinance of the council of the town of North Beach approving and adopting a budget for the town of North Beach for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-five and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, FYI twenty-six. Allocating expenses and appropriating funds to the general fund, sewer fund, water fund and capital projects fund and establishing the various tax rates and utility fees for fiscal year twenty twenty-six is outlined in attachment A. This motion includes confirmation that all legal requirements for submission, publication and public hearing have been met in accordance with Maryland law and the town charter. The town council, or the council held a public hearing on budget ordinance twenty-five dash one on May eighth, twenty twenty-five. The ordinance shall become effective upon its adoption at a second reading and shall govern the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-five.
Great job. That's why you're doing it and I'm not. Because I would have got yelled at three times by now. Especially with Alyssa sitting next to me. I know. All right. So we have a motion on the floor.
Second.
We have a second. Let's go into discussion. We have, we have talked extensively about this budget for a long time. I believe that Linda has spoken to everybody, reached out, see if you had any questions. You have the reports. So does anybody have any discussion before we move on to the vote? Hearing none? We have a motion second, no discussion. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Well, hold on. You good? Okay.
Yeah.
Did Greg say aye? Yeah.
Okay.
I saw, I saw his mouth move.
I heard uh.
Thumbs up. Sorry about that, Greg. All right, let's move on to item number two, which is ordinance twenty-five dash zero-two. Please take it away.
Yes, I move to approve emergency ordinance twenty-five dash two and ordinance of the council of the town of North Beach amending the town code chapter eighty-six, peace and good order as follows. Amending section eighty-five dash five point one to expand the list of town properties where the smoking, vaping and consumption of edible cannabis products are prohibited. Adding section eighty-five dash five point two to prohibit the operation of any establishment for the onsite consumption of edible cannabis products. Adding section eighty-six dash five point three to prohibit the distribution, sale or consumption of cannabis products at public events within town limits. And amending section eighty-six point six violations and penalties to establish a five hundred dollar municipal infraction fine for violations of any section of chapter eighty-six not otherwise classified as a misdemeanor. Would you like me to read? Additional background, if needed, this emergency ordinance is being adopted in accordance with the town's charter and Maryland code annotated local government article and is justified by the imminent onset of the summer season and the need to take immediate action to protect public health, welfare and peace. As five affirmative votes are required to declare an emergency and waive the standard waiting period. This motion also includes the declaration of emergency is set forth in the recitals of the ordinance. Upon adoption, the ordinance shall take effect immediately provided publication requirements under town charter nineteen dash three eleven are met.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. We have a motion second. Any discussion? Hearing none? Call for vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thumbs up.
All right. Well, let's do it again. I apologize. Paul Troncone, or Councilman Troncone?
Aye.
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 We had six. We didn't have five.
Good.
Thank you. No, no. Thank you for keeping us straight here. All right. Let's move right into business item twenty twenty-five dash zero zero five. Real quick, hold on before I go into further. Sergeant Norton, please, if you can, maybe next week, come back in and get with Linda so we can lay all this out. All right, thank you. Twenty twenty, excuse me, where am I? All right. Twenty twenty-five dash zero zero five, North Beach Green Infrastructure Design. I'm going to turn this over to Amanda for her to speak or explain it. And this is another low hanging one for us. So thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. This is award recommendation for the RFP twenty twenty-five zero zero five, North Beach Green Infrastructure Design. This is for a contract to hire qualified consultants to assist the design of stormwater green infrastructure practices for Greenwood Avenue Alley and Bay Avenue Parking Lot in North Beach. This is actually funding through Maryland Department of Natural Resources grant, the resiliency through restoration program. Award recommendation tonight is for Coastal Resources out of Annapolis, Maryland for a total lump sum of sixty-one thousand seven hundred and fourteen dollars and eighty-one cents.
And what is the town's responsibility?
Nothing.
Cost wise.
Oh, there should be no town responsibility as this is, we've been awarded a grant. Yep. This is for the design only. This is for design only. And then we hope upon completion of the design, we can resubmit for an additional grant for the actual construction. And that should be in fall later this year, fall twenty twenty-five. Happy to answer any questions.
I, I just have one quick one. Have we given them any boundaries or just said we have these spaces? And then design in that? Is that where we're at right now?
We've done an overview. We did have a pre-bid meeting. Donnie met with quite a few contractors, consultants that came in and were able to ask questions. We had several, several questions come in. We actually had eight proposals received. An evaluation was performed by Public Works, the zoning department, town administrator. So they sent their projects, work examples. Anything major from the discussion?
Councilman, yeah, we, we had met, like I said, with twenty vendors almost. And out of that we picked the eight. And then we had really the four proposals that were most fitting for us. They gave a real detailed outline. But when we met on site, we explained the problem we had with the water coming from the county of Greenwood Avenue. We looked at the alley there. We looked at the biggest space we could do something with and try to slow that down to help this street out. And then also we looked at Bay Avenue Parking Lot. And the reason we looked down there be because you know, we're trying to do something there, but also the library is right there so we can get a learning for the kids and all, you know. So.
Yeah, there's that green.
But they, they gave some really good detailed proposals, but they had plans. And
We'll hold a kickoff meeting to go further into detail about expectations and kind of go into the grant a little bit more. But Coastal, Coastal Resources definitely had the most technically, the highest technically evaluated proposal.
Since San Francisco went in, Greenwood's always been a do we want to punch it through question? And that was just trying to figure out if we do this, we're going to completely eat up that whole Greenwood spans or is there going to be a way to maintain something if we want to punch it through or not. So that, that was where my head was thinking.
One of the, one of the, all the sort of things in the RFP is when they get to sixty-five, seventy-five percent that we have a stakeholders meeting. So when they get, you know, close, closer, we can let them know in the pre-construction meeting, kickoff meeting, that, you know, the council would like to see it at fifty percent or whatever your pleasure.
Okay.
So, you know, we get some good ideas, good concepts around. And then we can have that meeting.
Okay.
With the stakeholders.
And again, this is just for design. So yep, we'll go, we can go over, like Donnie said, with the stakeholders, when we go to design the bid package for the construction and kind of go from there and take everybody's input as to what we're going to put and put out to the vendors, consultants.
That was all I had.
Any other questions? All right.
Okay, no more questions. I move that the council, town council approved the award of contract for professional consulting services to Coastal Resources Incorporated, CRI of Annapolis, Maryland in the amount of sixty-one thousand seven hundred and fourteen dollars and eighty-one cents for the design of stormwater green infrastructure improvements in the removal of impervious surfaces at Greenwood Avenue Alley and Bay, and the Bay Avenue Parking Lot in North Beach, Calvert County.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Councilman Dotson said aye. That's perfect. All right. Let's get right into the council mayor reports. Let's start with Councilman Dotson on the big screen.
Thanks, Mayor. Just glad to be here. Thank you all for your prayers and support. For you all that don't know, wife's been in the hospital for about six and a half weeks. I've pretty much been living there in the room with her. So we got back to North Beach yesterday about two PM and boy, did it feel good to be in our own house and in our own bed. So just glad to be back home. Looking forward to getting back around town. Good to see everyone.
Thank you so much, Councilman Dotson. You play a pivotal role. So we hope you can Chris moves forward and, you know, just, just let us know what you need from us.
Appreciate that, Mayor.
All right, let's go ahead and move down to the, we'll start down here on the right, Councilman Troncone.
I was like, thank everyone for coming out tonight or probably more likely being forced to be here since it's mostly thank you for being here. But joking aside, I just want to thank the town staff really for the great job of the budget this year. I think I've done this six or seven or eight times now. I can't remember. I feel like every year it gets better and better and this year is no exception. So thank you for your hard work and also your, your great stewardship of all the funds throughout the year as well. I know it's more than just planning. It's also execution and the town staff really just does a great job across the board. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank everyone who's not being coming out tonight. The only things that I want to mention is that we have the ladies of charity ribbon cutting coming up on the twelfth. And the mayor will talk more about that. And also we have MML coming up at the end of the month. And I want to give a quick plug for the council members here is that my wife is holding a seminar at MML. She has a etiquette club. She does etiquette on the side. That's her side gig. So she's doing a seminar on etiquette rules and things and interactions that for council members and government employees. I don't plan to be there because I already live it. So and also I don't want to embarrass her or anything like that. But please come out.
Greg, can you hear me?
Screen just went black.
Yeah, what, I wonder what happened to him.
All I saw was Mickey show up and then everybody else is gone.
So I didn't stop the meeting.
That's weird. What the heck? Whoa. I see Ray Sanders on here, Mickey, you and myself, no one else. That's weird.
Stop the recording and text him.
That is weird.